I'd like to call the September 14th, 2017, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Mr. Trivitt, we call a roll.
Here.
Here.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
And we need to approve the meeting minutes of August 7th and 10th, 2017.
I so move.
Seconded.
Mr. Trivitt.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
All right. First, we have a matter of special privilege, Excellence in Service Award, to Clark Wallace. Mr. Wallace, you join me at the podium?
Thank you, sir.
So, this award is very special, based on the recommendations of the folks that work with you. I understand some of those same folks have been giving you a little bit of a hard time this week. That's as good a sign as any that you deserve this. Two things that I've heard said about you this week, one of which was from the city Williamsburg administrator, said that they'd be hard-pressed to find anyone that spends more time in the city of Williamsburg than Mr. Wallace. Second was Mr. Ponce, said you're an excellent storyteller. So, once I read this recognition, you're gonna get the microphone. Clark Wallace has faithfully and honorably served the citizens of Williamsburg since June 12th, 1989, as Public Works Inspector. Clark is known for his incredible customer service and can-do attitude. Does not matter if he's working with a resident, contractor, or a city employee, he will work tirelessly to resolve any issue and ensure that everyone is satisfied with the outcome. He professionally and diplomatically works to alleviate the concerns of all involved. Clark is an invaluable asset due to the excellent working relationships that he has with local contractors and utility companies. If a resident reaches out to him about a problem because a contractor is not addressing their concerns, Clark is known to come to the rescue by calling in his contacts and getting results, often in the same day. It's hard not to look at the many projects in the city and see one that Clark has not had a role in. He manages construction in a majority of the city's capital improvement programs, including streetscape projects such as York Street and all the underground wiring projects, including the Second Street project. Clark was the man on the point during the construction of the $13 million Richmond Road reconstruction project, where on several occasions, he worked all night. One of his primary roles is providing quality control inspections on developer-installed public infrastructure to ensure it meets city standards. Clark also manages construction of the annual asphalt paving projects, sidewalk improvements, and water and sewer infrastructure projects, just to name a few. Clark Wallace is an exemplary city employee who is vital to the success of the Williamsburg Public Works Department. He's hereby recognized for his dedication in excellence in keeping the best tradition of public service in the city of Williamsburg. Congratulations.
For me.
Thank you, sir. Lee, you want a photo?
Vice Mayor, Council, my coworkers, family, friends. I'm not used to this. I'm used to working in the shadows, so to speak. But I'm very honored, very humbled, to accept an award like this. To my coworkers, I promise, it's gonna be five minutes. Twenty-eight years of being here, yes, I've got stories. I've got a lot of stories. But, City of Williamsburg is family. But it's truly, truly family. And I will say, one thing that I thought about since the best boss in the world broke this on me, was that a couple of years ago, college football, college football, was a saying, school would say, "We are. We are the city of Williamsburg." We do an excellent job, and the public should accept that from us. But we are the city of Williamsburg. Thank you very much.
Up next, we have public hearings. Lodging tax ordinance.
Honorable counsel, the proposed ordinance before you today, amend city code to increase the tax levy for the transient lodging tax from 7% to 8% is directed at the August 10th, 2017, meeting of the city council. The increase is proposed to provide the additional revenues to the Tourism Development Fund in the fiscal year 2019 budget. The effective date of the proposed ordinance is July 1st, 2018, consistent with other revenues dedicated for use by the Tourism Development Fund. Happy to answer any questions you have. It is a public hearing.
Questions?
No, no questions.
That'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this matter, come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Further discussion?
No, I think it was discussed at the August meeting. Appreciate the lodging organization for stepping up and being willing to accept this additional increase in taxes to fulfill the goals that we have with the Tourism Development Fund.
And I would echo that. I think this has been a long conversation since January, essentially, and grappled with it for many months, and I think there's been some acceptance that this is an appropriate thing to do, to support new initiatives in the future.
I will be respectfully opposing this lodging tax increase, just in a manner that's consistent with my respectful disagreement with the approach with the Tourism Development Fund, and, yeah, just optimistic to see how city staff continues to implement this program. But as of this tax, I don't believe it's in the right direction.
I'll reiterate, Ms. Ramsey's thanks to the lodging industry throughout this conversation. They were involved, and when it came to coming to a solution, they were willing to step up in a larger way, so. Entertaining motion?
I move that city council approve proposed ordinance 17-16, and ordinance amending section 18-237 of Article 2 of Chapter 18 of the city code to increase the levy for transient lodging tax to 8% and provide for an effective date of July 1, 2018.
Second. Mr. Trivitt?
No.
Aye.
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 That. City manager reports. Monthly financial statement, anything to point out?
Finance Director Searle, again, this month, and probably through the end of December, be presenting the financial report, just to remind the public about the difference in financial systems and why numbers are different in the event someone's watching.
Thanks, Phil.
Vice Mayor Foster and members of the council, I'll give another short update on the financial report. As a reminder, like I said last month, the two actual columns on the revenue and expenditure report this month don't necessarily compare apples to apples because of the new financial software. Again, the new Tyler system automatically records revenue and expenditure accruals, so that's why you'll see the total difference in the numbers. If you look at the room and meal taxes on the first page, you'll see that the second column is about double the first, so that's kind of where it hits home, you can see what's going on with those accruals. Also, on the sales tax report, you'll see there's no sales tax revenue. That's because both months that came in went to last year, so that's the difference. Okay? Also, another thing on the report, just wanted to mention, total expenditures look low, and that's mainly because the health agencies, Colonial Behavioral Health, WADMAC, the other outside agencies are showing no expenditures through August. Just so you know, last week, we paid over $1 million to those organizations, so that's why that number's low. It was about a week off in the payments, so we're right on time with everybody. The chamber got their quarterly upfront payment, and the WADMAC payment for July activity collected in August was paid last week. That's really all I wanted to highlight this month, and I'll be glad to try and answer any questions you have.
No questions, just thank you for continuing to update us and remind us.
So, the differences will eventually smooth out?
The differences will smooth out. In December, we'll do the reversing entries. Let me back up. We did the reversing entries last year in December. This year, they're not there to back out, so when you get your report in January for December, it'll be apples to apples, totally. And you'll get a good sense at that point. If you have any questions aside from any of that in the meantime, please let me know.
And I would imagine that's kind of a normal, when you switch to software systems, you're gonna have those types of flush.
And it is, and I just don't want to compliment my staff. They've done an extraordinary job with the conversion, total dedication by all involved, especially Mark's team, because the software side was truly a challenge, but they've really been dedicated, and the conversion's going as well as expected. Very confident with the numbers that their new system has.
Thank you.
Much appreciated, Phil. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
That. Monthly departmental operating reports?
And I'm gonna let the IT director shine a little bit on this one. As reported out in the previous month's work session, staff has been working towards moving towards a more digital, user-friendly operating report, and that's been incorporated into our performance management platform on our website, and Mark's gonna walk you through what the new digital operating reports look like and how to get to the data.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Foster and members of city council. As Mr. Collins noted, this is more of a refresher. You've seen this before, but we kind of want to just put this back in front of you, give you a little refresher of the new operating reports, because they are significantly different. First and foremost, how to access the reports. You do that via the city's performance management site, Williamsburg performs. That site is located at performance.wiensburgva.gov. Two ways to access it, you'll notice across the top, and this header remains consistent across the platform. If you were to select that, you can select any individual report. For example, if you only wanted to view the information technology report, you could select that there and bypass the landing page. The other way is down here, you'll see we've added another tab for the monthly operating reports, in addition to the eight major goal areas for the GIOs, those are there as well. So, we'll select that and go to the actual landing page for the monthly operating reports. Real quick on this, this is kind of where everything is stored, where all these reports are stored on the site itself. Give you a quick overview of the reports, kind of hopefully explain to you a little bit better why it matters, what we're trying to convey here, and then you get down into the actual reports. You'll see here, they're organized by department, and I'm gonna go back to that in just a second. But here at the bottom, I want to show you one thing before I move on from that. We've tried to bring in and somewhat aggregate a lot of reports and data onto the site to kind of add further. If you recall, one of the major reasons for doing this is to add context and value to all this data that we track. So, we're trying to bring in more information so that that can then further add that value and that context to it. First and foremost, your GIOs, your goals, initiatives, and outcomes. We added links here directly so that you can view, or the public, and that's probably a quick or a good time to make that distinction, this is available to anyone. These are, you know, the monthly departmental operating reports that you're used to, however, this is available to anyone, should they decide to look at this. Past city council agendas, review those, look at the meetings, links to Facebook Live, if you wanted to watch the meetings on Facebook Live, and then links back to the performance site. And then lastly, we've added some contact information to the bottom, so if anyone has any general questions or concerns, ideas, what have you, on the site itself, they can then have a method by which they can contact the city, and we could address those concerns for them. But getting into the reports, we'll look at mine first. My staff loves it when their picture pops up here. Again, trying to add value in that context to these reports, doing a lot of that visually. Every report that you're gonna see is gonna have an executive summary, and then they're gonna be broken down into various areas. Mine is broken down into support services, to online services, and then finally into website utilization, and then across, if you look at any of these individual metrics, you can hover over it, see the values, and then read the graph left to right and see how we're doing relative to prior years, which way the graph and the data is trending. And this is, these are consistent across all the various metrics that you're gonna see on any of these reports. Then along the bottom, we've taken, and again, tried to personalize these reports, so every department director that's responsible, or the person that's responsible for the data in these reports, their picture, their name, their title, and then contact information. So, should you have specific questions about that report, you know who to contact, the public knows who to contact about that data. Go back and look at one more. Fire. And again, just to kind of demonstrate the consistency across all the different reports, again, this idea of personalization, executive summary, and then metrics broken down throughout the department. So, in this case, we're looking at total calls for service, response time for fire, EMS, and so forth. Again, hover over it, see the individual values, reading left to right. And then lastly, should you want to look at the actual raw data, the data that makes up these reports, you can select the View Source Data link. Again, that's on every chart that you're gonna see on this. This is gonna take you to the page for the data set itself, show you all the individual metadata for this particular data set, and then allow you to go and explore it and view that data. Soon this comes up, you'll see across the top, you have the fiscal year and the month that the data is associated with, reading left to right, and then the columns across the top, you see are the individual metrics and those values associated with it. Last, if, and again, available to the public, available to council, to use as you see fit. You can filter that data out, get down to, take that entire data set and filter it down to what makes sense and what you want to look at. Visualize that data, make your own charts and graphs out of it, using these tools that are built into the platform, and then finally, exporting that data into a spreadsheet. So, if you have your own, or public has their own business intelligence-type tools, they can then take that and then filter, graph, however they want to do. So, the idea is to take all of this enormous amounts of data that we collect and report back out, but to make it available not only to council, but to the public as well. So, one last thing, and this is specific for council, on your iPads, through your iLegislate app, I would, we've done our best to make it kind of easy to use within the iPad. I still think it's not as good as it could be. My recommendation, and what I do on my iPad, is I've downloaded the Chrome browser, Google Chrome as the browser, it'll work just fine in Safari as well, but because the app that you use for your agendas, it doesn't handle webpages within it very well. So, the best thing to do is to get Chrome or to use Safari, bookmark the site, and then it'll work perfect throughout there, and certainly, myself or anyone in IT is happy to help you do all of that. So, with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Ramsey?
No questions. It's just quite remarkable, and I really appreciate the personalization of each page, too. It's nice to have them separated and have some identity. And I particularly liked your last comment. If we have any questions, come see you. I'll be there.
Thank you, Mark, for putting all this together. You know, I think what I like about it most is transparency. Whatever's happening in the city, whatever data points are created within the operations, it's available here for all the citizens and the general public to access, and so there's no hiding. And so, I think that's a positive thing. I think we all strive for that transparency. It'll take some getting used to, and I'm glad you pointed out the opportunity to put Google Chrome and find a way to do it, because what I found on here is kind of still challenging using the iPad, so I'm just one person, and I'll figure that out. But thank you for your work.
We're happy to help with that.
Thank you, Mark, and to your IT staff team. I was just kind of curious, in terms of metrics, have you, is there a way to kind of, not kind of, but is there a way to ascertain the web traffic with those?
Absolutely. Analytics are built into the platform.
Cool.
We're able to pull those analytics and then see what reports, what are the most accessed reports, what are users hitting, and then kind of assess the sites.
Is that public, or is that just for staff?
It's on the backside of it, in terms of pulling that, but it's certainly nothing that's difficult to make public at all.
Awesome. Great. Thank you very much.
Mark, sometimes it's, council notes the challenge in getting the public to engage us. This webpage makes about as easy as it gets. More data, the better, and for those folks that are interested, it's all there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Moving on to city manager reports. Legislative agenda development for the 2018 General Assembly. Looks like we have Mr. Trivitt for this.
Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of council. It's that time of year again, and we have to get ready for the legislative session to get started, so I thought we'd just talk a little bit about how the process will go. It's gonna look very similar to last year remarkably. It's September, so this is the time when we start putting together our thoughts on what would be included in our agenda. I'll begin that for you by kind of polling some of our partner agencies and see what's in their agenda that we might want to share as we go to Richmond. We carry that forward with a presentation at the October meeting, which will be the draft agenda, and then between the October meeting and the November meeting is when the council has the homework that you loved so much last year, where you'll think about what we presented and decide which items might be of most importance to you. We'll draw consensus from that to develop the final agenda, which will then be adopted by the city council in November. The next step is that we will have a legislative event where we invite our legislators to come in and meet with us and discuss what's on our agenda, and hopefully get them familiar with the issues that we think are important and why they're of importance to us. And session begins in January, the 2018 session. This is an even year, so it will be what's called Long Session in Virginia, which means it'll be a total of 60 days, so it won't be hopefully as rushed as it has been in the short session last year. But it will have interesting challenges that I'm looking forward to, is that the General Assembly Building is being demolished, as you may or may not know, and so they've moved the entire General Assembly function into the Pocahontas Building, which was absolutely not built for that purpose. So, it'll be interesting to see how they fit all of those people trying to do the good business of the Commonwealth into a much smaller space. I've looked at some pictures online, and it looks very nice. It actually looks much nicer than the General Assembly Building was, so maybe I'll be surprised, and it'll be a joy, but I doubt it. So, next, I wanted to show you who those partner organizations will be that we're gonna consult with. Obviously, they're the familiar faces, Colonial Williamsburg, the College of William &amp; Mary, the Chamber of Tourism Alliance, the WADMAC, York County, James City County. Those will be the primary ones that we look at. Last year, as you may remember, there were some issues that came up, and we consulted a lot of other jurisdictions that were dealing with those same issues, particularly dealing with Airbnb. So, just because they're not on the list doesn't mean that we won't be looking at their agendas, particularly in the region. And then we'll also look at our support organizations. As you know, many of us belong to professional organizations here at the city, and all of them adopt a legislative agenda, and we will take those and look for anything that might be of particular importance to the city of Williamsburg and include it. And then we'll fall back on our tried-and-true professionals, the VML and the VLGMA, for guidance on what may be of interest particularly to our local government. That's it. We look forward to getting started.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Second city manager report, Capital Landing Road sign easement. I have a conflict on this, as the applicant is a client of our firm, so for now, I'm gonna hand this gavel over to Vice Vice Mayor Ponce.
Do I get the launch code?
Yeah, that's right. They're in my brief. Ms. Burke.
Good afternoon. Today, I have for you an easement request from Commonwealth Insurance. They're proposing to move an existing sign from 944 Capital Landing Road to their new location at 925 Capital Landing Road. Currently, the way the property is situated is the structure is fairly far back from Capital Landing Road, and they are requesting to be able to locate the sign in the right-of-way. Due to the large right-of-way that we have and the pending improvements, staff has assembled a list of conditions for this potential placement. The Architectural Review Board reviewed and approved this sign at their August 22nd meeting, and staff would note that the applicant in your package has agreed to and understands that with 30 days' notice, that they could be required to remove the sign. I'll read you the conditions that I've provided. The permit should expire within three years from the date of the approval, unless city council notifies the applicant in writing that the sign must be removed in 30 days. The applicant is responsible for all costs associated with removal of the sign in the right-of-way, and any extension beyond three years requires approval from the city council. Approval is granted for the applicant only and is not transferable to future tenants or businesses. The right-of-way permit must be obtained before the installation of the sign, and a certificate of insurance and a bond, as outlined in my memo, would be required. With that, I can answer any questions you may have, or the applicant is also here if you have questions for them.
Ms. Ramsey?
I don't have any questions. I think the major concern was them recognizing that the sign would need to be moved, and that's been addressed, and I received a call from the applicant confirming that, so I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Oh, wow, this is so fast now. No, didn't expect that. Thank you, Aaron, and your staff for this. I have no further questions, but it's my understanding that this doesn't usually happen all the time, so I appreciate that staff was able to work with the applicant with this despite, you know, some of the challenges that may come ahead because of the improvement projects that we've designated with that. So, I just want to submit my appreciation to y'all for being able to work with applicant with this, and I understand this, the sign that they have, the one that's gonna be placed as a brand-new sign, too, so.
Oh, okay.
So, it'll be really cool to see that as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
No, I would agree. I think under the unique circumstances with the, where the building is associated with the road and the wide right-of-way, it kind of makes sense to offer this, and again, with the applicant being agreeable to the terms that you've laid out, I think it's a good thing to do, and keeping the business in the city, I think, is important, so.
Absolutely.
Glad to help.
I move that city council approve the location of the proposed sign on the city right-of-way, subject to the five conditions recommended by staff.
Seconded.
Mr. Trivitt?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Zhang?
Aye.
Power's fleeting.
All right. Up next, city attorney report?
Nothing today.
See nothing on her unfinished business? New business, appointment to boards and commissions? I think we have one.
Yes. I move that effective immediately, city council appoint the city of Williamsburg Police Chief Sean Dunn to the Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board for a term to run concurrent with his position as police chief.
Second. All right. Next, open forum.
To vote.
Excuse me.
Mr. Trivitt?
Mr. Trivitt, apologize. Skipping.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Terrence Wheel, 4012, Harriet Tubman Drive. Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate your listening. I'm here to address the proposed midtown development, the Food Lion Shopping Center area. To me, the plan is shocking. Does not uphold the character of our town, nor does it offer any benefits to the citizens. I understand that there is a process in place for this proposal, planning department to planning commission, to you, the council. Based on history, however, by the time it gets to you, the council, the deal is done. That's why I'm asking you to stop it now and get the citizens involved before going any further. If I applied for changes to my property similar to what this applicant is asking for, I doubt I would make it, or it would make it, out of the planning building. To wit, increase my home's height above what I'm allowed, decrease my side and front yard setbacks, exceed my allowed footprint, reduce my landscaping, and limit those who can live in my house to students and maybe a few professionals. There is an argument that this version of Newtown will attract young professionals. We've heard this before. When City Green was approved, they received zoning adjustments, special use permits predicated on this vision. Today, I'm confident that City Green is 90% student occupied. A special use permit was also issued for the Granger Building, also student occupied. Recently, the Days Inn was permitted by you to become student housing. For Tribe Square, the city created a whole new zoning designation, and it provides a lesson. This allowed for four unrelated persons per dwelling and a full-story increase. Part of the sweetener to get this approved was the promise of retail on the first floor. This obsession we have with residential over retail, in this case, was shown to be a mirage. None of the retail remains. My suspicion at the time was that the retail was just a canard to get the student housing approval and the income from it. With 14 rooms and 56 students, and a gross rental income of $4,000 per student per semester, and an additional $3,000 in summer, it would appear that a successful retail is not critical. The Midtown proposal is the same but much worse, like Tribe Square, which struggled to attract customers other than students who will shop at the retail floors proposed to lie under these student housing structures. And what structures they are, four of them, right on the road, five stories, stories tall, the same for an additional hotel, all with little setback. The proposed Midtown plan looks like a Newtown for students. Citizens have consistently said they don't want Williamsburg to look like Newtown. They also said that while they're sympathetic to student housing needs, they should not absorb the city itself. This plan envisions 240 units of student housing, sheltering approximately 600 students. In addition, a hotel is planned with 140 units. What's left for the citizens? Food Lion, Ace Hardware, and Sals. The selling of this project is also troubling. Early citizen comments are negative, yet the planning continues. At the recent public discussion of the improvement to Monticello Avenue, a street image of the proposed project was built into the street sketch, including the drawing of a five-story building. It's not been approved, but it's already in the picture, literally. It gives the impression that you've already made up your minds, and while this big building was looming, the discussion was channeled to biking and pedestrian traffic. I left. I did not want to give tacit approval to a proposed five-story building. As you know, you're working with professionals and big money. Today's WY Daily article about the project reads like a press release. It suggests that the ARB loves it, except they want it to be more edgy and cooler. The article left out the other ARB comments, including jarring. Buildings in height are too much for the area, and concern about the durability of construction materials. Midtown Shopping Center is our only dedicated commercial district in the center of Williamsburg. Do not turn it into student housing. Although commercial times are hard now, we will need this in the future for actual medium-sized commercial usage. If housing is needed, and you're adamant about mixed use, how about housing for retirees, for young families, for the working population? The entire project needs to be stopped and rethought. We can have a public meeting on this. Where is the character of Williamsburg? Where is the open sky, small-town feeling that we say we want? How will tourists react to this big town addition? But what, but what do others think? Planning and council hearings are not the place to get real input from your citizens. We need dialogue on such a town-altering proposal before we allow it to enter the formal application process. Troubling also is how did we get here at all? Need some help. Every committee we have is organized towards growth. Planning, the Economic Development Authority, now we have a new tax to encourage more growth. I'd like to suggest a new committee, a Williamsburg Preservation Committee. You need an official voice with access to you, encouraging you to protect the good that we have. So please, stop the manic development excitement, stop the project. We don't need a new town for students. Get your citizens involved, then move forward deliberately and with confidence, not with speed and hype. Appreciate your listening.
Mr. Wheel.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That. entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Trivet?
Aye.
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 Stand.